I'm ready.
Right ahead. At your leisure.
Then, let's call it an end. Let's, um, in the pleasure of the readings, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And, um, just, uh, I want to just thank you all for attending our holiday party today. And it was definitely wonderful to see all of our employees there, ones that we've never met. And, um, we are now on to the business of the day, and I was just wondering, is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, let us get on, right onto our, uh, our matter at hand, and that is, um, the ocean management plan.
Thank you. We have a presentation Heather McElroy is going to make. We were part of the ocean advisory committee, which was created by the Ocean Management Act. Stacy Justice was the staff member that was appointed to that for the first six months or so, and then Stacy moved to Michigan, and Heather had to replace her on that committee. And I've attended a few of those committees. So as we were moving through the process, the plan by legislative mandate passed issue by December 31st. So we have another couple of weeks before that issues, and there have been some intense negotiations concerning the details of that plan that Senator O'Leary has been involved with, along with the Cape Cod Commission and Marcus Vineyard Commission. But I think the best place to start would be from the beginning with the presentation by Heather.
Okay. Let me just start.
Okay. Thank you. For everyone from the McElroy, natural resources specialists, Cape Cod Commission. And as Paul indicated, I'm going to give you an overview of the state's ocean management plan, which will be promulgated on December 31st of this year. It started back a year and a half ago with the Massachusetts Oceans Act 2008, signed in May of last year. Following the governor's signature on that act, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, which for simplification I refer to as DEA, formed an ocean advisory commission and several other commissions that work with, including a science advisory commission, to really facilitate the data gathering and public input on the plan. And as Paul indicated, we had a staff person attending, a participant, active participant in the ocean advisory commission. That commission held public hearings through the fall and, uh, June of last year, seeing a couple of hearings here in Cape Cod, together, public input. They had hearings across the state. They then went away and quickly put together, um, a plan, a draft plan, which they issued on June 30th of this year. They invited public comment. Their official, um, comment period on that draft plan started with their first hearing in September, concluding on November 23rd, when the comment period ended.
Heather, what does DEA stand for?
Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So they, uh, they are the umbrella for all things environment.
Okay, and it's their plan, they're promulgating?
They are the ones promulgating the plan.
Are they the ones that had the hearings?
They are. Uh, the staff hosted some of the hearings with the ocean advisory commission, which includes members of both RPAs, legislators, various interested parties, nonprofits, and interest groups.
And this was initiated by Senator O'Leary in the beginning?
The Oceans Act was...
The Oceans Act, right.
Yes.
So this is the plan to follow that?
Exactly. Um, and as we've discussed, the, the state is required to promulgate a final plan on December 31st. So, um, the act establishes 15 ocean planning principles, which they refer to as the Ocean 15, by which this plan is to be developed, includes things like stewardship of the ocean, preserving the public trust, reflecting the recreational economic benefits the ocean provides to us, and also acknowledging the value of maintaining the ecosystem health of our oceans. The act also calls for the plan to allow for appropriately scaled renewable energy development, which is new use allowed in our ocean waters going beyond the limited uses of the Ocean Sanctuaries Act, um, established. Uh, the plan has to be implemented through the existing state review procedures, and it's to be revised every five years. Plan development, briefly, I wasn't involved in it directly, but from what I understand, they went through an extensive data collection process. They did spatial analysis, which is essentially mapping those, those, uh, data that they collected. They evaluated various different kind of management options for implementing, um, this plan, and they issued a draft plan in June. Uh, so a little overview of the kind of data that they collected. They mapped numerous critical natural resources, including fishing, birds, marine mammals, also the abiotic resources, the, those things on the ocean floor, within the ocean, that support all of the other, uh, flora and fauna. They also mapped existing ocean uses that are significant to us all, natural fishing activities, recreational fishing and boating. They also noted areas that were, um, just sort of purely recreational by, by use. They also matched wind and tidal resources, and they mapped historic resources. Then they went through a data analysis process, primarily using the science advisory group. It broke down into work groups, but essentially to identify and map special sensitive and unique areas. These were specifically for, um, the, the natural resources that are out there, identify these SSVs, special sensitive and unique habitats. So just to look at what some of this data looks like, just a couple of examples. This is the commercial fisheries activity in a indicated area generally where the data came from. There's an extensive discussion in the plan about how they collect the data and where the data came from. Uh, but this shows, um, commercial fisheries activity by high, medium, low, high being the darker color, low being the lighter color. Uh, here's recreational fishing areas, you know, where does, where are their concentrations of recreational fishing happening? Here are wind and currents means, again, sort of high, medium, low. Um, and I should have said, speaking of what we're looking at, this red outline is the, uh, the planning area for ocean management plan. So the state established roughly a, um, .3 nautical mile from land, from mean high water out into the ocean as their starting point, and then two, three miles from mean high wa, nautical miles from mean high water, um, which looks like this, this sort of buffer that comes around. And then in certain areas where the common, the extent of the common love waters go beyond that three mile limit, then you have, um, a greater area here, here, obviously. The planning area excludes certain harbor areas, um, you know, in the Boston Harbor here. This is the whole area of, if we, sand and neck, the vulnerable harbor areas excluded, for example.
Why, excuse me, why is that?
I think they, uh, I don't know the exact reason, but they, they decided that there were, um, resources that were inside of that line, that were within the jurisdiction of , of towns, that, you know, towns were actively managing those areas, um, and that the areas that were more, more in the public domain were going to be the subject of the plan.
Heather, one of the, one of the issues that comes up immediately is that, I believe that the town sandwich is trying to get authority to build the campus, to do the groin, it revolves there, because part of the problem there is erosion, and also a flow of, um, and hazards material, but particular matter that is, that is affecting the, that coast, which is on standing up.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Right. Thank you. If they're doing that, and that's not within the area of, you know, planning, uh, what, you know, that had seemed to me to be, you know, appropriate issue because of the regional nature of it, because part of Sandy Neck is, is in Bristol, and, and at the edge of the coast of Yama, you know, over to Gray's Beach. So that, I'm, I'm kind of surprised that's not within the area of jurisdiction that you're talking about, finding regulation.
Well, again, I think there are numerous areas, and that's one example of a local project, is the sandwich. I'm hearing two, two pieces there, but the sandwich, um, uh, beach and beach nourishment and jetty extension project. Um, I happen to be a planner here who's been following that project for now 10 years, I think. Um, there are numerous projects like that where communities are looking to beach nourishment association with dredging, or in this case, an, an engineering solution to a long-term problem, um, that are not part of this, of the state's planning area. Um, and that, I think, may have done deliberate. I mean, this is...
Okay, but you, what you're saying is still part of our, our area of regulation and...
Right. Yes, yes. We, we comment on those kinds of projects, and in that case, we, it's a regional impact.
Just to cut, like, three tenths of a mile out from the mean high water.
Exactly, which is 1,500 feet, roughly.
Right. Okay, that's right. All right.
Sorry, I should have covered, uh...
That's okay.
The jurisdictional areas, to begin with. Um, okay, so this is, uh, habitat areas for the North Atlantic right whale, um, again, by use, you know, sort of the darker colors, meaning a higher intensity of use. So then, they utilize data like this with their science advisory, um, work group and the sub-work groups under that, to identify the special sensitive and unique habitats. And you go from something like this to this, which, if we go back again, is clearly that interior dark red area. Um, but this is where the most sightings of the red whales have, uh, been made. Um, so this turns into a map that is used in a more regulatory fashion, and I'll get into that in a second. For clarity purposes, I'm calling them management maps. Um, here's another example. This is, um, where shellfish and crustaceans are located, and the different colors represent different kinds of shellfish and crustaceans. Um, they use that in combination with fisheries resources, again, high, medium, low, um, to come up with what they're calling the important fish resource areas. And so you see those here in the hatching, um, mostly in the Antecat Sound part of, uh, Cape Cod. Um, so, following all of that data collection, they then went away and did a compatibility analysis, where they looked at each of the uses allowed under the Ocean Sanctuaries Act and also, um, by the Oceans Act of 2008. Um, they looked at those specific uses in relationship to each of these resources, and, uh, tried to determine compatibility between those allowed uses and those resources. And the result was, um, a number of compatibility maps that are used in conjunction with sighting and performance standards for each of those specific uses, and I'm using examples. Um, so this is kind of overwhelming at, at first glance. This is the management map for sand and gravel. Um, and what we're seeing here is, um, those special sensitive and unique areas, those sort of core habitat areas for a variety of, of resources, variety of, of whales in here, terns in here, the shellfishes, again, you can see here, the, or the important fish resource areas is this area here. As well as, um, here, here are the, the resources that are, um, the natural resources that they felt would be incompatible with sand and gravel mining. And then also, some of the, the uses of human activities occurring in those areas that might not be absolutely incompatible, but where there would be some, some incompatibilities. Um, and they identified recreational fishing and commercial fishing as, as the problems. So for each of the different allowed uses, sand and gravel mining is one, they went through and they did this kind of analysis and prepared this kind of map. Uh, which is then used in conjunction with the sighting standards. So if you want to propose a sand and gravel project in the ocean waters, um, you need to essentially avoid areas that have been defined as exclusionary, really that, a higher level, where, um, sand and gravel mining in whale habitat is determined is an exclusionary activity. You can overcome that presumption by demonstrating that there's no less damaging practical alternative to your proposed use in that location, or provide better data that the whales aren't really there, or, I mean, whatever it might be. Um, or if you're proposing a use in one of those recreational activity areas or commercial fishing activities, those human use areas where they've determined that there could be an incompatibility, um, there's a lesser standard, which is avoid, minimize, or mitigate the impacts. So that's the sighting criteria. Once you've overcome the sighting issues, um, then you need to go through the regular permitting process through NEPA, and meet all of those permitting standards, um, where the baseline test essentially is of ways to minimize and mitigate your impacts. So this is the overall big picture map that, um, compiles all of the different management maps, um, and through the simplified way. Um, the red area, which is coincident with the Cape Cod Ocean Sanctuary, um, the plan identifies as no activity area, nothing is allowed there at all. They have identified two areas, um, off the Elizabeth Islands and off the No Man's Land as specifically, um, mean energy or potentially, uh, any kind of renewable energy, um, development areas of a commercial scale. They define commercial scales greater than 10 turbines. Um, these areas, they anticipate, you know, could accommodate, I forget how many, I think they said, 150 turbines, um, based on the, you know, the layout of the Cape Cod project. But it could also accommodate another kind of renewable energy project. The, the, the majority of the planning area is in this blue slash, and that has been defined as multi-use area. And again, that's where any of the uses allowed under the Ocean Sanctuaries Act may be allowed subject to those sighting and performance standards, but I just, not for the specific use. Um, in the multi-use area, commercial scale wind is, is prohibited, that's laid out in the plan. Community scale wind, um, which they've defined as 10 turbines or less, could be allowed, provided also, these are some additional criteria, that the select, that the affected communities, or what, tell me what the, the affected communities, agree, um, and that an economic benefit to the community is demonstrated. And then it also has to meet all of the sighting and performance standards. Um, the plan...
How do they define the community?
They don't. That's to be...
That's where we're going to be, okay.
Yeah. Um, I, I think, you know, the, the plan is very broad, it could probably be interpreted by any affected community.
Is it economic benefit determined?
It's not. Not defined, not expressed. So, and what I'm reviewing is the draft plan, obviously.
Is this done by a planner, someplace?
Okay, next time. All right.
So, um, but what the plan also suggests is that any turbine proposed within the, um, planning area should be subject to development of regional impact review by the two regional agencies that have that review authority. We don't present any thresholds, um, to ensure that the review, who would review turbines, but they lay that out in the plan. It also says that there is, um, a cap of 10 turbines in each RPA planning area, based on some discussions that have gone, gone on during the comment period, that cap may increase for Cape Cod. So here's the management map for community scaled wind, and, uh, the exclusionary areas for, those areas where it meets that, has to meet that higher, um, threshold of review for sighting of a wind project are most of the areas that are shown here. This area, this brown hatch is commercial fishing, I believe. So you see that here, you see that here. Also, the, um, the navigational lanes, and it's in the blue and this green, um, those are defined as not exclusionary, but avoid these resources, so they have a sort of a lesser standard of review for sighting purposes. But you can see for Cape Cod, there are areas in the sound and in the bay where, um, community scale wind, if it meets those other criteria, could be permitted. And it, of course, they could be proposed in exclusionary areas, they just have to go through the process of addressing those other, um, criteria. So, I'm nearly at the end here. The plan, uh, puts out a couple of charges to regional planning agencies, as I've, as I've mentioned, um, that, uh, Cape, the Cape Cod Commission, or the Marcus Vineyard Commission should be able to review wind turbines in the, the ocean area. In this, um, intervening time since the, um, the comment period opened, we've also received a letter from the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs indicating that the RPA should also be allowed to determine the appropriate scale of renewable energy facilities. And then the plan also acknowledges that districts of critical planning concern, DCPCs, are a tool that are available to the Marcus Vineyard and Cape Cod communities to help address planning and regulatory concerns, um, in our ocean waters. So just as a summary, um, the state took comments through, formally comments through November 23rd. Um, they're busy making new revisions, and they have to calibrate this plan by December 31st. I mean, that's all I have, unless you have any questions about the plan for me.
Yes, Bill.
The Marcus Vineyard process doesn't require a review, because I think what you're asking for us is to do a nomination of this as a DCPC?
Well, that's what I'm proposing here.
Yeah, I'm asking Heather.
Paul's going to get into that?
Yeah. So why don't we, should we let Paul give his presentation?
I'd like to finish my question.
Oh, fine.
The Marcus Vineyard process doesn't require that it go to an assembly or, say, for approval or support.
For approval.
But the Cape, any DCPC nominated here, just go to the assembly, I believe. Okay? The assembly doesn't meet after today.
Right.
And so I don't see how we'd be able to, how we'd be able to accommodate this between now and the, and the year, especially given the questions that, you know, that are, you know, that seem to be undefined with regard to the information we received from the state.
Paul, do you want to answer that, or do you want to...
Yes. It has to do with the DCPC process, and Christie Centauri, Chief Regulatory Officer, is here to answer any of the specifics on it, but in, in general, once the nomination is made and it's been published, there is a moratorium put in place over the subject area. And what we're going to have, what's going to happen here is we're going to have a lapse between when this plan is going to issue, and we could see potential applications coming in, and the time that we need to have a community process to help us determine what the appropriate level, what appropriate scale for commercial development is. And also, there's a second important feature here, which is the plan gives, um, RPAs in conjunction with communities, so the Cape Cod Commission, uh, jurisdictional community wind projects, which will be, from the Cape's perspective, anywhere from 10 to 25 windmills that can be, uh, to support community. And so those are two important processes that if we allow this plan to issue on the 31st, and this is why the vineyard went forward, we allow the plan to issue on the 31st, and there's a gap, then, uh, we're going to be potentially thrown in, in the middle of this without any guidance at all to, to people that may want to come here and, and develop alternative resources. So that's, that's why the, the moratorium would be in place. The, uh, assembly, we'd assume, would probably take this up in April?
Yeah.
Probably in April time.
Well, they could take it up in January.
They could take a...
I was under the understanding that, um, there will be letters going out to the towns stating that, um, asking for...
Well, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, because we jumped right into sort of the DCPC nomination, so, sorry. And I want to make sure that we're methodical in the way to answer these questions.
Just something you said, Paul, let me clarify. Community is 10 turbines or less?
No.
And commercial is 10 or more?
Uh, no, the, the definition for commercial scale is more than 10.
More than, greater than 10?
Greater than 10.
So community is 10 or...
As it stands now, originally, there was a floor for community wind that was 10 turbines or less, or fewer. But that has changed. There's been a discussion of all the regional, uh, planning agencies that are coastal, and, uh, there's a lot of interest in community wind. And so they have, uh, put forth a couple of different formulas that will produce, from the Cape's perspective, anywhere from 10 to 25 turbines, that would be community wind projects that we could meter up. And, you know, we've had some discussions about the, you know, community wind is sort of the hull model, but hull happened prior to utility deregulation, you know, transmission lines, and get a better deal than, than we ever could at this point. So we would actually need more turbines to be as effective as the hull model, and we've had some discussions with Maggie about whether 10 makes sense or not, and probably more.
Okay. Just to, I understand the scope of this area, you know, the, the Cape itself is 400 square miles or so, as far as, as far as the land area, and the area you're describing looks like about 1,000 square miles. Is that accurate?
Less than that.
It's less than 1,000 square.
500 square miles, so about 900.
Yeah, it's just under.
Excuse me.
So this is the, this is the jurisdictional area that's, um, that we've got to take a look at. So this is the, the area that we have to discuss. As a regional planning agency, we have to embark on a community process now, we take these two issues under, under examination. How are we going to define what is an appropriate scale for commercial, uh, development in these areas, and to how are we going to, going to meter out these, uh, community windmills? And they're two of the important issues, and they pull on, on different strengths, but there's a lot of interest in the community wind from the communities, and, uh, so we want to get that piece of it cleared up first. Are we going to deal with that process and what's that, that's going to look like? A lot of interesting possibilities for producing renewables under the community wind provisions of the, of the plan. And there's also the commercial scale aspect of this. But to purpose the whole discussion, I want, I would like to look to Antecat Sound and just say, uh, that we are all aware that Cape Wind is out there as a project, and, uh, the commission has never taken a substantive position on that project, who procedurally denied it, uh, because they just, they stopped coming to meetings at some point. Uh, so that's out there, and that's subject to litigation, so we're severely constrained on to, as to what we can say about that. But the major, uh, objection there is that no one should be able to come in and, uh, go through a process, uh, with less than good faith. It requires a good faith attempt at local permitting, and you shouldn't be able to bootstrap yourself into the yet. So that's a jurisdictional issue that's, that's out there, that will be settled in the spring, and I'm thankful for that. But we have to look at, um, the really positive things that have happened because of that project. And Senator O'Leary's Ocean Management Act and the Ocean Management Plan is one of them. The second one that, uh, the chair and I have, have had the opportunity to attend a month ago, was the federal process by the Minerals Management Service to look at this area three miles up to 200. In both instances, there's been effort at consensus and defining how we're going to do this, and looking at local community benefit, and, and treating, uh, the areas affected with a great deal of sensitivity, in a way that will expedite these projects, not slow them down. And so that is very good news, I think, for everybody on the other side of this project. And that's what we're trying to do here. I think, uh, within 180 days, we should be able to come up with the regulations that I think within 180 days, we should be able to come up with the regulations that we need in order to feel confident about anybody who wants to come in, whether it's a town that wants to avail itself of the community wind options, or whether it is a commercial provider that wants to look at commercial scale wind at all. And I don't think that that's too long. And I think if we do this, and we don't have to deal haphazard with projects that come in, we have a thorough process that involves the community. And from the commission's perspective, we've been through this process with the RCT, we've been through this process with the SEDS, and I think we can do it with wind, too. And we can generate in six months a process that has some consensus with it, where it's a known entity, it's predictable, it's a certain project, that will lead to the creation of renewable power where appropriate, much more quickly than anything else that will avail itself now. If someone were to jump the gun and come in in January before we have this in place, I guarantee you it will slow the process down. So to give us six months to get this process in place, I think really serves everybody's interest here. So what we're asking for, what is possible today, under the act, Cape Cod Commission and the county commissioners can both designate regional districts of critical planning concern. And so it's in front of you today for information purposes. Should you decide to nominate, you certainly have the authority to do that today. If you don't, the same presentation is going to the Cape Cod Commission tomorrow, where they will have the option to nominate on their own. And, yeah?
The process question, ordinarily, this would go to the Cape Cod Commission first and come to us?
It doesn't have, the designation of a nomination of district of critical planning concern can come from any, it can come from the towns first, it can come from the commissioners first.
So the next piece is that, let's say that we go through this. Do you have the assets and the resources in order to support this? Because you're talking about an area that's considerably larger than the area that we're addressing now as far as land issues. When we get a DCPC nomination, it's normally from a community, and the community has spent some energy and time discovering whether the assets in order to, in order to move forward. There's a specific period of time, as I recall, that they have to develop the plan that you're talking about. When does that clock start for this plan?
The nomination would start a full moratorium. We would notify the towns immediately. Nothing in that moratorium should stop anything that's already going on. The Ocean Management Plan didn't anticipate this going to have any interaction with fishing or anything else. And you can see by that plan, that was an exhaustive process that the state went through, and one that really should be lauded. Darren Bradrigh, they worked very hard on this plan, and they've been very formidable to us over the last few months in developing our role in this plan. So do we have, we have, the jurisdiction is ours. These projects are going to come to us by the plan. It's not that we have a choice right now. Do you think we have the resources? Yeah, I do think we have the resources. We obviously handled Cape Wind when it came initially.
There is another concern that I have, is that other projects, Cape Wind, for example, had the support of the Facility Siting Board, which was identified as being superior to the Cape Cod Commission in regard to jurisdiction.
Those jurisdictional issues have been worked out in detail in the plan.
In the plan?
In the plan.
Excuse me. If they've been worked out in the plan, does this plan have the authority putting upon the administration? Is this signed off on by the governor?
The plan is going to be signed off by Secretary Ian Bolz, Secretary of the EEA, with the governor's full approval and authority. So we're acting pursuant to that. I think a lot...
So did that work before then?
Well, it's going to happen on the 31st, and we've had preliminary discussions. EEA realizes, too, that there's a potential gap in this that could be very problematic from their perspective. I don't think that the governor or the secretary is in a hurry to have a project try to wedge in between when the RPA is ready to deal with it and when the plan passes. That's not going to be good for them either. You know, I think this is not an effort to stop development out there. In fact, I think it is an effort to enhance the ability of somebody to come through a process that is predictable and certain, and therefore faster than anything that's available out there to them now. So that is the effort that's underway. So it's, you know, it's a, I think there's a lot of good news here. I think this is the good news on the other side of Cape Wind. I think we have a very serious role in the process. It's been recognized by the administration, and will be recognized in the plan, and I think it's going to push us as a community beyond Cape Cod. And so we are looking forward to that. Now, is there a lot of work to do in the next six months in order to get this done? Absolutely. Apparently, a lot of work to do. But it's not like we haven't been thinking about these issues, and it's not like a lot of these issues haven't preliminarily been vetted through the ocean management process, which is also acted on a very expedited timeframe. So it's, I think we should be embracing as a community the opportunity to be heard in waters, in the state waters that affect us directly.
Paul, in looking at the letter from Secretary Bolz to Representative Madden and Senator O'Leary, it seems as though, you know, they are definitely giving this jurisdiction to the regional planning boards of the Cape, of the vineyard and the Cape Cod Commission. And it almost sounds as though they're encouraging that something like this happens so that we can avoid, it's almost a gesture, and the tool that's been put in there, the DCPC, is so that we can avoid having the backup and the logjam that has occurred with Cape Wind.
The vineyard has already acted to use DCPC to process. And the plan acknowledges the two commissions, both Cape Cod Commission and Martha Zinnier Commission, and references specifically the DCPC as the planning tool to bridge that time between when the plan issues and when we're ready to play a role in that process.
Yeah, what you're really doing is using the DCPC as a tool to maintain local control, so you don't give it up for this interim period, if I understand this correctly. That's really what you're doing, is you're preserving kind of our say right now in any projects that are promulgated over the next six months.
It is. I mean, the secretary has been very gracious, and, you know, we've worked hard to come to an understanding about how we're going to deal with this out there. This tool does preserve that jurisdiction, and, but I think more importantly, sets in place a process that will lead to regulations, as all DCPCs, too, do. And those regulations will be an understanding of what an appropriate-sized commercial-scale project will be out there, and also how we're going to deal with community.
And also, it's not just preserving our jurisdiction, but our jurisdiction as the Cape. So therefore, the towns, they're being protected by this so that nobody gets an idea that they can do something, everyone gets crazy about it, now they find out that that's not an appropriate scale. I mean, it sort of sets the pace of what the expectation is out of those waters before people start going ahead and putting money down and dreams.
And as Heather pointed out, there are some areas down here in Nantucket Sound and sort of in pieces of the bay that, you know, could attract some immediate...
I have a question.
I have a question. I'm more accustomed to DCPCs originating from towns, around the municipal side. If we were to vote today to initiate, well, what would be the...
And now we're going to nominate.
Nominate this area as a DCPC. How does the process work from there? Where does it go next?
Well, the next thing that we would do is, and Christie's here to take you through that step-by-step if you decide that you want to do that.
Okay. But you want to finish?
Yeah. Yeah. But the next, the next step, I would ask, is to communicate directly with the towns. And we have an 800-piece mailing that is ready to go out on Friday, that will notify everybody where we're at. We're asking all the towns for any exemptions of the moratorium that they want included, where they may have some interest out here. Even though none of this area conflicts directly with municipal jurisdiction, you know, many municipalities do have projects and have interests out here that affect them directly, we want to make sure that they are in no way impaired by the DCPC. So we will be sending out that mailing and looking for that input.
My next question is, if we were to nominate this today, what would be the role of the Cape Cod Commission?
Well, we're going to handle all that notification. We'll notify the commission tomorrow that it's been nomination, and so there'll be an application, discussion in front of the commission. Maybe this is, unless Maggie had a question?
I just wanted to make, to talk about the process, if you could, before that. The moratorium, is a moratorium on development of renewable energy projects, or is it a moratorium on everything in the DCPC area?
It is a general moratorium on permitting any activities out there. I think this is a...
My next, the question is, there are many dredging permits that are up for renewal and, I'll take my, my renewable energy hat off from a dredge hat. Are you then, will that then hold up the issuing of dredging permits that are scheduled for this winter season?
That is, yeah.
Christie, why don't you take us through it?
I can, I can answer that question, I think. Okay. Pardon it to you. But the initial moratorium is a full moratorium, which will be in place until January 21st, when the nomination, we go to the full commission for a vote to accept the nomination for consideration. And in that vote, we could outline specific activities that we hear back from all the communities on, that should be allowed to go forward during the remaining period of the DCPC if it's actually designated.
Question.
That would itemize all of those dredging permits. So we're talking about a limited area, a limited time for a full moratorium where, right, dredging permits might not be able to go forward. But again, it's an area that starts 1,500 feet from mean high water.
And I'm going, before I say that, I don't know that it's an issue, because our peak dredging series ends in January.
Right.
Because we have this winter flounder that shuts us down in February. So I know we're going for, going to Truro, I don't know, and I'd ask that we should just have this conversation and know, were we going to shut down a project that's been scheduled? I just, that's easy to find out, a quick phone call, but I just think we should have that in front of you.
May we have Christie, please?
Sure.
Christie?
And so that question, and maybe that they already have a permit?
Right.
So they, they usually know in these, those types of towns, they're, we're waiting on permits because they're not that organized. So I just want to make sure that we know, you may decide to go ahead anyway, but I just want to make sure you know we're impacting it.
That's, well, those are going to be the projects that would be sent back to the commission stating that this is already in the pipeline to be done. Those would receive exemptions?
No. I think I was trying to stand...
No, as you very specifically said, if permits were in place, they would receive exemptions.
Okay.
The practice in the past of the Cape Cod Commission is that if you do not have something in process, you have to then apply to the Cape Cod Commission, and in past, that is an expense that has to be borne by the applicant.
Would you like Christie to answer these questions, please?
Go back a step and start. If you do decide to nominate today, which the Cape Cod Commission Act allows you to do, from exception, can be, the county commissioners, if you nominate, this will be published in the Cape Cod Times, as well as 10 local papers that we received the nomination, and that will begin the full moratorium. And then the Cape Cod Commission would determine on January 21st at a public hearing whether to accept the nomination for consideration. And if they do that, that will begin a limited moratorium. And so you're talking about the limited time period from sometime next week, or when it will be published, to January 21st, that will be a full moratorium.
A simple phone call, and then you'd have the information with all, I'll make the call. I don't think so, but I just want to...
Do I do that one?
Sure. I'm pretty sure we're going to be in term and we'll be icing in the general, like always, but I just want to come back. Probably January 18th.
It's still not clear that you cannot, you said that you have a limited exemption. It's still not clear to me in terms of not just permitted activities, but anticipated activities. You know, for example, when you went through the DCPC for Craigville Beach, there were houses that were, or lots that were exempted, and then there was further application for, you know, for exemptions, and then there was a process of hardship exclusions. And I know that if I were in a town and I was anticipating, looking at an investment of taxpayer money to support an anticipated dredging activity, I would not want to look forward to having to go to the Cape Cod Commission and pay extra money in order to do something that I anticipated, because we have a moratorium that seemed to be specifically pointed towards protecting our interest with regard to renewable energy. And I want to say that, hey, my support for this, if I decide to support it, has a lot to do with the protection of the interest of those communities that have dredging activities or are in a place where they need to dredge, that they would not have bearing additional expense by having to circumvent a moratorium.
Yeah, I would, we don't anticipate that any projects would be directly affected. We anticipate that the limited moratorium that would allow, lift all of those, any restriction would be in place by the 21st of January. If for some reason there were a project that got caught up in it, they certainly could come through with a hardship exemption, and those fees certainly could be waived to municipalities with dredge projects. There's nothing standing in the way of that. In fact, most of the hardship exemptions that we've seen that are related to DCPC that were private interests have had fees waived or some measure of them waived over the last 12 months.
Forrest, do you have a question?
No, I don't.
I think Christie should just go through a step-by-step timeline.
Let's do that for us, if you would.
Sure. So starting from if you do decide to nominate today, just would go to the full commission on January 21st, there would be a public hearing, and they would decide whether or not to accept the nomination for consideration. That must be within 45 days of the actual nomination, so bringing it to January 1st would be a regularly scheduled full commission meeting. After that, there would be several public hearings held in many of the Cape towns across the Cape. Within 60 days of the commission accepting the nomination for consideration, the commission would then render a decision as to whether they want to designate the area as a DCPC. This can be extended up to 120 days, so if the public process needs additional time, we need additional public hearings, this could be extended, it just has to be provided a written explanation from the commission. And in this decision, it will specify guidelines for development going forward. And these are guidelines that would guide the implementing regulations that eventually would come out of the DCPC process. The assembly would then get the recommendation from the commission, and the assembly would hold a public hearing and determine, again, within 60 days, whether or not they want to propose the designation. They can approve the designation by an ordinance, or they can return it to the commission for re-study and redrafting. And then the designation would take effect upon the effective date of the ordinance. At that point, municipalities would have 12 months to provide implementing regulations to the commission, and eventually to the assembly for adoption.
Any questions? Okay. Continue, please.
Well, I think that is pretty much where we're at. I mean, this is the presentation that we're going to make tomorrow. I think the nomination of the DCPC is crucial. I can't remember a time in the past where it would have been more appropriate to do this, so that we can get the planning. I'm confident the commission can conclude our part of this process in probably 180 days or six months. The towns, once it's designated, would have up to 12 months if they wanted to weigh in on how they want to participate on this. But I think ultimately, designation of a DCPC, the development of a determination of what's appropriate, what that process for review is going to be for commercial wind, and the development of a process by which we're going to deal with community wind, are essential for us to move forward with alternative energy, maximizing our potential out there in a way that's responsible to the Cape, its community character and its future economic development. And this is a, this is a great planning tool to use in order to get us there. And once we're there, it will be faster and more certain and more predictable for people that want to look at producing renewable energy and using the state waters off of Cape Cod, which comprise two thirds of the coast of Massachusetts. This is the process that we want to do. We don't want to do this all one at a time, we want to put that process in place upfront. So are there any questions?
If I may just say, I did speak with, I'm sorry, I did speak with Senator O'Leary, and I happened to speak with him over the weekend, and we discussed this. And, you know, he's definitely, you know, was very favorable to this and felt that it was deliberately put in the act as a tool to use, so therefore, recognize it and make use of it. But, Pat, you had a question?
Yeah. Which of the red lines actually show the area of the DCPC?
It's everything within the red line.
The outer, the outer red line.
That's, yeah, but hell, there's an inner red line, too.
Oh.
That is the 1,500.
The 1,500.
So you see, this is why... So you see, this is why I don't think a lot of the dredge projects are going to be affected. You know, you see that there's a significant area in Princeville Harbor and Lewis Bay and Flus Bay.
Right, and then there's Truro up there, which I know is going to be payment, payment and-
Payment, and, you know, we've got lovely harbor.
Right, they're all, and they're all municipal lines, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be doing it, okay?
It'd be twain, on, you know, a moratorium, if I understood, understand correctly, now January 21st should not impact the work that we have scheduled. Will, this is a question he asked, he asked to me. Stage Harbor, which is in Chatham, is in the permitting process, and they are 2,500 feet out. So that one is-
Stage Harbor is, I'm not exactly sure where that is, but it's, yeah, it's in here, isn't it?
Yeah.
But it's not-
But their project is-
2,500 feet out.
I mean, that looks like it's-
What's the anticipation timeframe for that?
They're in the permitting, they're in the renewal process. So in the short run, the work that we've got scheduled is allegedly all permitted. Because, and then Swan River, you should know is working on a permit that that's inside, so it shouldn't be an issue. But the Stage Harbor one is, is a question.
It's pending in the future.
I just want to say, the only one we have, from other ones we might want to do outreach to is in case it's steamship or we have something.
But isn't that part of the letter, this is part of the communication that you've been sending out?
Well, the only, yeah, it's part of the notification, the 800s, to get all of these responses back. And if, the only projects that would be affected is those projects that have not been permitted but would be permitted within the next, really, three weeks of January. And then I think after that, we're fine.
Right, because then the full moratorium is lifted.
Yeah, the limited moratorium kicks in and all of these projects get the example on.
I think, I think we're okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, I just-
I've got to ask this question. If we do nothing, what happens?
We run a risk.
A risk?
Yep.
Okay, what is the risk?
The risk is that you're going to have a project or a development take the plan and try to seek to permit a project in there without us having outlined how we're going to do that and how we're going to meet it. And I think what you run the risk of is Cape Wind too, from a procedural perspective. It will be much better for anyone who wants to do this to wait until we've got our ducks lined up on how we're going to, how we're going to deal with this issue. The other thing you get is you might get a food fight in 15 towns for community wind.
Do you have any history of any application, people that have looked for permits in this area within the last couple years? Nobody's applied. So this is, this is not anything, do you have any, any procedure?
So I'm not going to, I'm not going to sort of conject, get into hypothetical situations and make any conjecture about who's ready or who's not.
No, you're not suggesting that. It's just I don't know whether you have any-
If I could finish, please.
Yes.
What I do want to suggest is that there have been a lot of people and a lot of development interest that have been waiting for this plan. And so I think that there is a risk. Obviously, the Vineyard thought there was, there was a risk too. And if I felt there was no risk, and we're not allowed to, I think what you're suggesting is we're up here saying we should do this because, you know, we've got nothing else to do. We've got plenty of other things to do. If I didn't feel there was a risk, I would not be bringing this forward this time.
I'm not suggesting at all that you have nothing else to do and you're looking for something to do. I never suggested that. However, whenever, you know, whenever I hear that, you know, there's a project going on that has been, you know, two weeks before the end of the year, you're asking us to make, to make a nomination for something, it's, the information that we've got from the state seems to be relatively inconclusive with regard to what they are committing to. They're making suggestions, they're making publications. It doesn't seem to be, you know, any guidance from the state with regard to the length and breadth of the projects. So I just look, you know, I just think that in doing it due diligence with regard to this, that we have responsibility to ask these questions.
May I say something? This is all new territory for everyone. That was evidence, that was evidence in the MMS. They now have identified areas on the continental shelf. They are looking for the local community input. That is a very good thing. They are trying to, I think that Cape Wind is something that has reverberated throughout the renewable energy industry and through the government, and nobody wants to have this happen again. This is an area, every, as Paul said, people are waiting, and there's a lot of money in green, and some of it's good money and some of it's going to be charlatans coming in. If there is not, and then there'll be towns that will think this is going to benefit us, they'll put a stake out there and find out this is not really the appropriate place for this because of your resources. It's better for everyone to know upfront what is available to them as opposed to putting out hopes and money and then being told no, and then having a fight over that. I think that this is our opportunity to, to be good stewards and to make sure that the right thing is done with this land. And that's my position on this. I am in favor of it. And Pat, I think you had something to say.
Well, I, I think, I followed the process of the Vineyard and their concerns with the ocean management plan and the fact that their coastline, they did not believe had sufficient protection as yet. And so they acted very quickly. I think they mobilized themselves, the Martha Vineyard Commission, and they had hearings and the state people, I think, were there, involves, I know was involved. And so they came up with this DCPC because the whole impetus of it is local control. And I think if you look at the 15 towns on the Cape, that's their mantra too, is local control. They want to preserve that. And if this ocean management, at this point of becoming law, doesn't provide those kinds of local control, then I think it's up that we have that same opportunity that the Vineyard has, is to be able to fill that gap and to, and to be able to work with the towns as the commission can and preserve the local control, but also provide the technical planning support that the towns might need. So I see this as a real benefit to the towns, and I would think that they would appreciate the fact that this effort is being taken really on their behalf as well.
Absolutely.
And, and I would think that they would accept it.
I was just going to say, you know, not to respond to them, but to point out, Phil, that I think you mentioned that they haven't given you any guidance, and I would disagree with that. I'd say, they're not telling you what to do, but the fact that in the ocean management plan, they've recognized the ability for the Cape Cod Commission and Martha's Vineyard Commission to do these DCPCs, that's, you know, that's an incredible thing the state to do. And I believe that's probably encouraging you to take those steps and they're acknowledging and making, claiming that that's the right thing for you to do. And it is, I think it, you know, give you a sort of this fast process, but I think-
I think sometimes, in some ways, it might slow some of the process down so you can have a chance to think and plan it outright so that people know what they're doing as opposed to have acid mishmash going on up there.
You know, the plan and the secretary and governor anticipate the use of DCPCs. They've almost invited us to come in and participate in this way. The Vineyard has already, I think, in some ways, it might be negligent to pass on the opportunity to maintain local control and to make sure that the towns have a voice at the table. And I really believe long-term that regardless of where you fall on wind power, the fastest way to do it is to engage the local communities. And to define a process by whose that engagement is going to happen is the opportunity that we have here. And I really feel that it would be, it would put us at risk and it would be to miss an opportunity to provide some clarity and some certainty and a voice at the table for the renewable energy.
Should the state allow their land to be used for the private developer to commit and build projects that would benefit the communities? And that's what it was all about. But in the end, what it was really about was the difference of the local control. And the people who spoke, including myself, at the end, when I saw it was necessary, because there were some groups there who really did not want to see any local control. They wanted to be able to deal directly with the state, and that's how they wanted it to be. And yet, those of us who could work locally really felt the necessity to stand up and defend the importance of the local control, that each community needs to have some say in their coastline, in their shoreline, or even public lands that are part of their communities. So I think that this, as Paul said, this is what this DCPC is about, is to preserve that local control. So I think it's important to do it.
I'm on record, as you know, in voting for the procedural denial because I felt that the facility siting board was usurping the authority that I felt should have been given to us. The other piece was, as far as my concern, is that there should be some tangible benefit to the community because we are suggesting that we're willing to give up what I would call a tangible asset to some of us, which would be to defuse Cape. And finally, I believe that we, there is a cautionary note that we have to be very concerned with, and it was in the New York Times about the amount of money and subsidies that's involved in, let's say, in this process. And we have to be very, I think we have to be very clear that our interest in this is not, is not driven by what I would call private developers' interest as much as it is our concern to protect the interest of the constituency of Cape Cod. So if, and I hope you would accept the fact that the questions I'm asking you are from a professional point of view, not beating you up.
No, I agree with everything that you said, Phil. I mean, I really do. It's important, all of the issues that you raised are right on, and I know where you were on the other review of the project. Those are the kind of questions we want to ask and answer upfront so that we don't run into, you know, when there's a lack of process in the use of public lands, you wind up with, in every instance, with incredibly polarized projects that can't seem to move forward because of that polarization. I think we have an opportunity here to remove that from the scenario, to remove the emotion from the debate, and let's deal with the facts out there. And I know that we're going to produce more power from renewables offshore on the other side of this plan.
Right. Any other questions?
Just one final thing. When you're talking about renewables, remember that, you know, you have tidal power, you have the 11-foot draw between one end of the canal and the other, and that there are other kinds of turbines besides ones that are run by, you know, by water traps, that business is safe and sound and is around, like, it's not, it's not, because I'm going to address this. Thank you.
Well, on that, I'd like to move that we, the commissioners, nominate the Ocean Management Planning District as a District of Critical Planning Concern and forward this nomination to the commission for consideration.
I'll second.
In discussion, we're, are we saying that we are asking the commission to confirm? I think, I think we have the right to do that on our own, without asking the commission to-
The motion I believe you made is for you, for the Board of County Commissioners to nominate.
To nominate this, and then it will go, this presentation will go before the commission.
Okay, but not for confirmation?
Not for confirmation.
The nomination is an actual-
I believe that's consistent with our power.
To ordering it to the Cape Cod Commission.
That's the only thing I want to clarify, because I guard very jealously authority in these matters.
You're right, as you wish.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great job.
Great. It's a great, and I think it's, I think it's actually magnificent, the state's agenda.
Yes, this is that letter.